I called the meeting to order at 7:13 and state that the notice of the regular city council meeting was duly posted. The pledge will be led by the Elkins High School Air Force Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps.
(inaudible) 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 Thank you. We will now have our presentation of Public Administration Day. Missouri City in partnership with our partners has convened a group of innovative leaders to share best practices as well as to host a number of community events aimed at showcasing the many qualities that make our region unique. The goal is to strengthen through professional development the pipeline of leaders for public service to combat the significant wave of retirement and to address the sector's identified generational gap. I, Yolanda Ford, on behalf of city council and the citizens of Missouri City, do hereby proclaim October 2nd, 2019, as Public Administration Day. Look, if you have any words.
(laughing) Mayor Ford, thank you so very much. You know, a lot of folks always talk about public administration being a thankless profession, but I'm so very proud of the men and women who impact the lives of our community on a day-to-day basis. At the same time, we're very happy about investing in the next generation of leaders. During the week of October 2nd, we will be hosting our Second Annual Public Administration Day where we invite 11th and 12th graders, high schoolers, to job shadow public administrators in a variety of fields while at the same time exposing them to a number of tours so that they may consider being a public administrator of the future. We believe building our pipeline, preparing them for the rigors of public service, but letting them know that you can be an engineer, you can be an attorney, you can be a firefighter, and impact lives is important. So, that week, we have our Leadership Now Conference where we -- is a partnership with Sugar Land, Pearland, Bel Air, and other jurisdictions that have come together with us to allow our public administrators to add to their toolbox while also, as I stated earlier, investing in the next generation of leaders. So, thank you so much, Mayor Ford, for this designation, and we look forward to continuing the work of making our city the best city in the country.
(inaudible) 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 We will move on to public comments, and we have one -- are these agenda items?
Agenda items.
Okay. So, we do not have any public comments. The ones that have signed up, they're for items on the agenda, and I will call you up during the actual agenda item. Now, we have staff reports.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Ford and council. I hope all had a nice weekend. I wanted to let our residents know that there is a storm system that's headed our way, and we've had a small sample of that so far this afternoon. Staff is closely monitoring this system as flash flooding is a possibility. To stay up to date on possible weather threats, we encourage our residents to please go to That's www.MissouriCityReady.com. Speaking of rain, as you may recall, the annual employee barbecue cook-off during our Public Service Appreciation Week was postponed in May due to storms, and we had stated that we would come back later on in the year because we wanted to celebrate our employees, to give them that opportunity as we annually do. So, we've set that for next Friday, September 27th. As a result, our -- all non-emergency officers will be closed from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for that celebration. I'm excited to share with everyone that I was informed today that I was elected to be a National Fellow in the National Academy of Public Administration. There were 51 individuals across the country. There are a total of 900 across the world. I'm very humbled by this accomplishment and extremely proud to serve the residents of Missouri City. It's -- (applause) I was -- one of my colleagues called me because most of these individuals have been governors and professors, deans, et cetera, but it's not many city managers that are part of the academy, so I'm very happy about that designation. Some of the upcoming events that we have, we have the Community Connection, which is this Thursday, September 19th. Oktoberfest is this Saturday, and our staff has worked very, very hard. September 21st, we'll be at the Coeur Valley Golf Course. It's an opportunity to really have some fun, so we encourage you to go on our website to learn more about Oktoberfest. A lot of people may say it's in September and you're saying Oktoberfest, but if you look at the history of Oktoberfest, it actually is in September. MCTX Job Fair and Doing Business with the City Workshop is on Tuesday, September 24th. We encourage our residents to come out, particularly those that have businesses, so that they can learn how to navigate through our city in order to get business with Missouri City. Our National Night Out Kickoff Party will be on Saturday, September 28th. Our National Night Out will be on Tuesday, October 1st. And to end it all out, our Community Night Out will be on Saturday, October 5th, which is a free event, a community-friendly event with national artists, including Keat Capri as well as the SOS Band. So, we encourage our community to come back, govern themselves accordingly, but check our website, and we look forward to engaging them as we move forward. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
(inaudible)
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. 7A zoning public hearings and ordinances? There are none. 7B1?
An ordinance --
I'm sorry.
I apologize.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
An ordinance of the City of Missouri City, Texas approving and adopting the City of Missouri City, Texas general budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2019, and ending September 30th, 2020, making appropriations for the city for such fiscal year as reflected in said budget, adopting a projection for capital improvement program spending beginning October 1st, 2019, and ending September 30th, 2024, making certain findings and containing certain provisions relating to the subject.
Elena, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and council.
Good evening.
Tonight, I'll provide a brief overview of items that we have reviewed at previous council meetings regarding the fiscal year 2020 budget. Of course, the budget was completed with council priorities in mind. These priorities are in line with your strategic goals, and these priorities were identified at the retreat in February. This includes economic development, redevelopment, infrastructure, the fire department, employees, beautification, and partnerships. Within the budget, we were able to fund approximately $2.9 million in supplemental requests. Of this amount, $766,000 was reprogrammed existing dollars, and 2.2 is the net supplemental amount. Within these amounts, we were able to fund your priorities. We have economic development and redevelopment at approximately $127,500 with those items listed. Small business program, we have $5,000 program to be able to put on two workshops for small business. Within infrastructure, we have approximately $7.9 million, almost $8 million in projects as listed, and we reviewed these in detail previously. Included in infrastructure, we do have two debt issuances proposed. We're proposing to issue $7.4 million in general obligation bonds, and we also have certificates of obligation that we are proposing to issue, and that will be $6.9 for water wastewater for the expansion of Mustang Bayou and $925,000 for a fire pumper for Station Also, for the fire department, we have approximately $5.5 million as programmed, which also includes the design and construction of fire station number 6. For employees, we have approximately $725,000 in the budget, which includes a one-time 1% salary incentive amongst other items, including paying for accrued leave liabilities and our wellness program. Within the budget, there are 373 employees. This includes three new positions, which have minimal impact to the general fund because they are funded either through a reallocation of existing dollars or with the utility fund, and that includes one employee in the utilities department, one employee in IT, which is in response to the employee survey, and we have one employee in the Parks and Recreation Department, which was funded using part-time dollars. For beautification, we have approximately $259,000 with the major item being the major entry points into the city. Partnerships, it's about $5 million. This includes the Mustang expansion and other partnerships that we're committed to. Quick overview of the budget again, the general fund. We have total revenue of $55,91,174, and we have expenditures, including transfers out of $54,591,174. The budget increases fund balance by $500,000, and we have an estimated fund balance of approximately $15 million, which would be 27%, which is within our goal of between 20 to 30. For special revenue funds, we have total revenue and transfers of approximately $11.2 million. Total uses, we have approximately $12.9 million, which would leave an ending fund balance in special revenue funds, which includes asset seizure, radio communications, few court funds, PEG, MCTV, grants, donations, CDBG, hotel occupancy, MCDAs, our three TERS, our two PIDs, and many parkland zones. The ending fund balance is 19.3 with all of those combined. Our debt service fund has revenue of approximately $11.7 million with expenditures and transfers of 11.4. The fund balance will increase by $254,554, leaving an ending fund balance of approximately $6.1 million. Capital projects, which includes our metro CIP, all of our project funds, including general government parks and transportation, our roadway impact fee, and our 2018 general obligation fund, we have total revenue and transfers of approximately $13.5 million, total uses of 21.4, leaving a -- an ending fund balance of approximately 15.6. Of course, we are using fund balance because we have bond proceeds that are rolling over into the next fiscal year for capital projects. Our enterprise fund, we have total revenue and transfers of approximately 40.6, our total expenditures 53.5, and an ending fund balance of approximately 59.3. This also includes use of bond proceeds for projects within the utilities. The last fund to be presented tonight, we have our equipment replacement funds, which include our fleet equipment and our IT replacement. We have total revenue and transfers of approximately 2.2, the total uses 1.3, our ending fund balance would be approximately 1.8, and we are attempting to build up our fund balance for replacement schedules and schedule replacements in the future. In summary, the fiscal year 2020 proposed budget revenue for all funds is a little over $134 million. All expenditures, expenditures for all funds, approximately $155 million. So, tonight, of course, this is budget hearing with the adoption, possible adoption of the ordinance. We also have an agenda item for the first hearing for the property tax increase with the second hearing scheduled for September 23rd. And that concludes my presentation. Do we have any questions?
Just -- so, tonight is just the budget hearing?
No, it's also budget adoption.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. All righty.
Mayor, I would like to thank our staff, not only the budget staff who've done a very good job in going through this process, but our department directors, who, quite frankly, have really tightened their belts and, more importantly, looking at ways in which we can coincide there are some middles to your priorities that you established in February. So, my hat goes off to them for their hard work, but more importantly, also the citizens who gave us a lot of feedback to help us craft this budget. So, I just wanted to take this time to thank them as well.
So, tonight, because there's quite a bit, there's budget hearing, there's adoption of the budget, as well as the property tax increase. So, just FYI for everybody, I'm gonna have to read quite a bit, so. So, thank you, Elena. Is -- let me go back up. Is there a motion to open a public hearing?
I move that we open a public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. I don't have anyone who signed up. Is there anyone who would like to speak on agenda item 7B1? Are there any questions?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor? All opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to adopt the proposed fiscal year 2020 city budget as presented by record vote? Is there a motion?
Move to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, we need to go from each council member?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
A.
Councilmember Edwards?
A.
Councilmember Emery?
A.
A. Councilmember Boni? Councilmember Rulis?
A.
Councilmember Pearson?
A.
All righty. Is there a motion to ratify the increase in property tax revenues reflected in the adopted budget for fiscal year 2020? Is there a motion?
(laughing) Oh, yeah. Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
We don't need to do record vote, right?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. 7B2, first of two public hearings to receive comments regarding the city's proposed tax rate of up to 63 cents. All righty, Elena.
Okay, it's me again. Okay, so, a quick overview of the truth in taxation process. Once a city receives a certified values, we calculate the effective tax rate and rollback rate. The effective tax rate is the rate that generates no additional revenue. That rate was .603916 per $100 of assessed evaluation. The rollback rate is also calculated, and that is the increase, the 8% cap for this year, 3.5% next year, but it's an increase to operations and maintenance. This calculation resulted in a rollback rate of .639873 per $100 of assessed evaluation. The proposed tax rate is 63 cents, which is higher than the lower of the two, and that requires two public hearings. So, this is the first public hearing, and the second is scheduled for September 23rd. Of the tax rate, the .63, we have .46639 for maintenance and operations, which is for the general operations, and then we have debt service of .16361.
And what is our current?
Our current rate is .63.
Okay. Just making sure.
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Is there a second? All those in favor? I have two people who have signed up. Bruce Saberowski, please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Bruce Saberowski, 7915 Chancal Drive, Houston, Texas, 77071. This tax proposal has nothing for senior citizens. What are you doing with all this money? We still have over 31 mud districts. Do you add people's mud district taxes into the total taxes? What it costs to live in Missouri City? When you add that figure in, our tax rate is quite high. This past city council didn't seem concerned about unifying the city. It's still run by the -- like the Roman Empire or feudal Europe. I mean, no senior exemption, no homestead exemption, still don't have city water or sewer, 31-plus mud districts provide this. We have a wonderful golf course. Duh. I mean, you know, in 1982, my $74,000 house was $7,000 more a couple blocks over in Houston, but I've paid over $30,000 in extra taxes over the last 37 years for the privilege of being in Missouri City. Do you take that in consideration? I mean, come on, folks, you gotta get together here and unify this city and have one common water and sewer, have one area that everybody can go to, and stop this nonsense of excessive taxation. My property taxes are going up more than that because my appraisal district already increased my house 10%. So, basically, I guess you're gonna roll it back to 8%. I'm not getting an 8% raise every year being retired. Are you people getting an 8% raise? What are you doing with this money? Missouri City needs to be a unified city and not something like from feudal Europe or the Roman Empire. Thank you.
Thank you. Lyneel Walton, please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Lyneel Walton, 236757, Missouri City, Texas, 7749. I concur with the life that the gentleman before he said about the mud tax. Just a recent mud tax increase with the appraisal. Increase the appraisal. It's gonna --
Also, increase the taxes. We get into a taxation situation where hopefully the governor can step in, which he promised to do, to unify this thing and make some sense out of it, because these tax rates are getting to the point where senior citizens are just working or living to pay taxes, and this is not right. That's me. Thank you.
Thank you. We didn't get anyone else to sign up. Are there any comments from the council?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that we're staying at 63 cents, and that's actually below our rollback rate to which we could actually go to. And another thing is the point that was brought up about the senior exemptions is something that we actually had had conversations about, but because of the timeframe at which to consider it for budget considerations, it would have had to been done by July 1st.
Yes, sir.
And so, therefore, it wasn't something that we could actually decide upon or at least include for discussion for public consumption for this budget cycle. So, definitely next year, I'm sure that that'll be part of the discussion.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Eight appointments, there are none.
If I may, Mayor, before moving on, there's a required statement that you have to read after a tax hearing. It's highlighted in blue.
The city council of -- that one, the --
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. The city council of the City of Missouri City is scheduled to vote on a proposed tax rate of up to 63 cents at the public meeting to be held on Monday, October 7th, 2019, in the city council chamber located at 1522 Texas Parkway, Missouri City at 7:00 p.m. All right. Thank you. Eight appointments, there are none. 9A, consider authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute an amendment to the existing contract for ditch cleaning and excavation services. Who's present?
Evening, Mayor and council. Back on May 6th, we came before y'all and asked for authorization to enter a contract with Texas Drainage for ditch cleaning and excavation services. We had a -- quite a substantial backlog of projects, and we quickly ran through that money, and so, we had some cost savings in other areas. And so, what we'd like to do is ask for y'all's permission to authorize a couple of amendments to that contract so that we can continue to do a little bit more work this year and in the coming years. The cap for increase to the contract is 25%. The original contract was for $120,000 over three years. The first author is -- first amendment we're asking for is the ability to increase that amount to $150,000, which is the 25%. And then, we had a $40,000 a year cap on the contract as well. We're asking for that to be removed so that we can spend those additional monies to do some additional work throughout the city.
So, is there gonna be a cap now or just what -- where?
Overall, it'll be $150,000 for the three years.
For the three years?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions, discussion?
Do we have any priorities as to where we need the -- these services?
Most of these are based on requests by residents, so if we know that there's areas that are -- have drainage problems, we'll do those, and then also from requests as well. So, there are a few that we did this year that were based on just -- we knew where they were. East Road, I think, was one, and then there was Lucy Lane, I think, was another. And then, we had some requests. We did some work in the manors and things of that nature.
I've had a resident ask me about a few. I'm gonna direct her to the city manager. I think it might be for Bean County. Do we work with them to do their part to make sure if it's in the county?
We can check, Mayor. We collaborate with them.
I'll just sit her over to you.
If you're for it to me, we'll see what we can do.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Do we have an idea of what is causing a lot of the buildup? You know, is it trash or is it?
Just over time, open ditches will develop silt just from yard runoff, and, you know, you get dirt on your driveway, on the road, it washes into the ditches, it'll slowly clog the --
So, nothing from a preventative standpoint that can be done to prevent that, huh?
Not really. We just gotta maintain it and flush those systems out whenever we can or when we know of issues.
So, we have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. 9B, consider authorizing the city manager to execute a one-year contract extension with Wells Fargo Bank for deposit -- depository services.
Good evening again. Resolution 1720 authorized a contract with Wells Fargo Bank for depository services. The contract was issued for an initial two-year period with three one-year renewal options for a contract term not to exceed five years. The initial two-year period expires on September 30th, 2019, and staff is requesting to exercise the first renewal option. This option -- this information was presented to the Finance and Services Committee on September 12th.
Staff is pleased with the services received from Wells Fargo, and we recommend renewal of the contract. I'm available for any questions.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions concerned?
Yes, if you don't mind, could we briefly discuss the questions that were raised during the committee meeting regarding some of the names?
During our committee meeting, we had our relationship manager present to the finance committee information regarding all of our accounts. And within the packet was a sheet that had all of the signers on the accounts. And the sheet that they had included Allen Owen for LGC. I do want to state that Allen Owen is not a signer on our account. His signature is not on any of our checks. And we did receive a letter from Wells Fargo stating that that was an error. They received communication from the city to remove Allen Owens on December 17, 2018. They also received updated signature cards in January. So that was a mistake on their sheet.
But I want to reemphasize, it was not on the city's end. And we, actually, I called Mayor Protem Preston today to inform him since he's the chair of the committee. There was a letter, an email that we're gonna send to the full council this evening, as well as the letter from Wells Fargo indicating their error. But fortunately, based on the process that we have, and it being LGC, the signers are, in this case, myself and Elena, and no checks were out with Mr. Owen's name on it.
I'm sorry, any other questions? All those in favor? All opposed, motion passes. 10A, ordinances?
An ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, amending the personnel policy of the city of Missouri City, providing for repeal and providing for severability.
Does anyone present?
I thought I saw our HR director here. But Mayor, this is an ordinance that amends Section 7.2 of our personnel policy. The purpose of this amendment is to revise the current vocational accrual. As you recall, we modified that consistent with Gallagher's recommendation. So the purpose of this, since it's in our personnel policy, is to update and consummate that in the personnel policy of the city.
This is second reading?
Yes. So.
If I may, there have been changes between first and second reading.
Alright, so we can open up for discussion. Is there a motion? Oh, did you have a presentation? I'm sorry.
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Is there a sec, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I had a question in reference to this. Does it apply to our first responders?
Yes, it's for, for, all the accruals were updated.
Is it gonna be the same across the board?
Here, I'll let, Mark, go ahead.
No, actually, the first responders, because of the hours that they work, their accrual rate, as far as their total amount, would be different than other regular employees.
Okay.
But it would be an increase.
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
Mayor, just to get back with you on your question that you asked the last time I was up doing a presentation about other cities as far as their accrual rates, that they, the total amounts. I did get that information.
Okay.
For you. Out of the, I think it was the 17 cities that responded, the aggregate total was about 280 across the board compared to Missouri City's 256.
Okay, so we're a little lower.
We're a little lower, as far as total amount that an employee can actually cash out.
Let's just keep it on the ra, I know it's budget, based on budget. Let's just keep it on the radar that, you know, and make sure we look at it during the budget years or whatever, so we can eventually get there, so. Are there any other questions? Alrighty, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All opposed, motion passes.
10B, an ordinance of the city of Missouri City, Texas, authorizing the crediting of updated service credits in the Texas municipal retirement system for certain city of Missouri City employees who have membership in such system, providing for increased annuities for certain city of Missouri City retirees and beneficiaries of deceased retirees, providing for repeal, providing an effective date, and providing for severability.
Elena.
Okay. As in previous years, we are requesting to adopt the ad hoc contribution rate. We received the 2020 contribution rate, which is effective January 1st. That is 9%. The fiscal year 2020 budget was developed using a 10% rate, which will fund the updated service credit at 100% and COLA at 70% as well as pay down some of our unfunded pension liability. When using the ad hoc contribution rates, TMRS requires that this ordinance be adopted annually. That's my presentation.
Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any questions or concern? Are there any questions or concern? Not all of them? Okay. Well, we have no questions. All those in favor? All opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
11 resolutions, there are no resolutions. 12 councils, city council announcement, Mayor Protem?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Edwards?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Emery?
Missouri City Police Officers Association Golf Tournament is this Friday, weather permitting. So it's an event that's their fundraiser for the association, and it goes to great causes, helping out police officers that might have financial issues. I think five or six people that have, that they've helped. And also scholarships. I think they, I think they're gonna be, depending on the income coming in, it's gonna be at least five or six scholarships that will be given to police officers associations' family or members of the association. So it's a great event. Have a silent auction. It starts, the golf tournament starts at 12. Silent auction and dinner is at about 5, 6 o'clock. We've had this before. We have a ball drop. We get the fire department to bring out their big ladder truck. We put 500 balls in a bag up at the top of the ladder and drop them, and those balls that have been bought and have a number on it goes into a hole, golf hole. They split half of the proceeds. And normally, we split probably between $500 and $600. So it's, it's quite a spectacle when you see 500 golf balls drop out of a sack at about, what, 40 to 50? So it's, it's quite an event. So if you have time, come out, go to the golf course and participate in the activities.
Thank you. Councilmember Boni?
Yeah, a few things. One, just got back from the Congressional Black Caucus's 2019 Annual Leadership Conference in Washington, DC. While there, had a great opportunity to visit with, and talk to a lot of young, aspiring individuals there, such as the Youth From the World Youth Foundation, Ms. Karen Franklin's group, who for 24 years have taken young people from the Houston, greater Houston area to Washington, DC to receive mentorship and meet with congressional leaders and others in DC. Also had an opportunity to go visit and speak to the National Forum for Black Public Administrators, National Mentor Program Group, which develops and grows the next generation of leaders from across the country in the areas of public service and public policy. And lastly, had a great opportunity to have a productive meeting with, while on Capitol Hill, with the staff of US Senator John Cornyn's office, Ms. Erin Overman, who is the legislative correspondent and grants coordinator, and Mr. Jeffrey Last, my namesake, Jeffrey, who is the healthcare legislative assistant, discussing ways in which there may be some potential federal funds for Missouri City in the areas of educating, since we talked about first responders, on identifying and effectively dealing with individuals with mental health issues, addressing the ever-increasing group home challenges that we face here in Missouri City, addressing the medical deserts that exist in the Texas Parkway Cartwright Corridor in 98 due to a lack of medical facilities, infrastructure, our Veterans Memorial Project and other parks, such as the Freedom Tree that Councilmember Emery and I are working on, economic development and redevelopment and other opportunities for potential funding. So, you know, it was a great meeting and definitely happy to be there representing Missouri City. That's it.
Councilmember Rulis?
So Channel 13 is featuring Missouri City, Texas. They've been in around our city for the last few days. They featured Sugar Cycles. They feature the top six restaurants, including Brandani's. There's some new businesses that I invite everybody to try. Trill Tacos on Cartwright and Doles. Teehoo Coffee is a really good place. So I invite everybody to go out and, you know, support our local business owners because they need us and we need them.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Pearson?
Well, I just wanna congratulate the city manager again for him being selected. Congratulations. Also, I would like to thank city manager and staff for working with Texas Dot, getting those turnarounds on Texas Parkway addressed. If you've noticed, they're working on those now. So I just want to say thanks to you guys again.
Thank you, sir.
So I'm gonna take the next 30 minutes and repeat everything that, no. I'm gonna say ditto. Ditto. And we will adjourn if there's no further business. Do we have another executive session? No?
No.
Alrighty, we are adjourned. Thank you.